Good evening, everyone. Before tonight's meeting, we had interviews for boards and commission members, and we also had an executive session on personnel matters and real estate matters. Are there any visitors or public comments tonight? Announcements, the next board of supervisors meeting is Tuesday, December 17. And don't forget Doylestown Township is on Facebook and Twitter. Minutes' approval for November 19, 2013. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Reports from the solicitor.
I have nothing to report anywhere in the agenda, hopefully.
Chief, I mean Sergeant?
I'd be...
I'll take care of the retirement of officers.
Nothing other than that.
Nothing, okay, very good. Township engineer is not here. Managing.
I have some very good news. Last week, we learned that we are the recipient of a DCED grant from Commonwealth Financing Authority, this Act 13 Project Awards. And if you look at your list number 50, you'll see that Doylestown Township matching grant of $221,190,000 for the Century Trail. The second item I have is just for the board to select a date for the reorganization meeting.
You can't select a date.
Not time, I'm sorry, I meant a time, not the date.
I propose 4:00 PM. That way, staff members and people can make it. Does that sound good? 4:00? Everyone okay?
Yes.
And the auditors usually reorganize on the 7th, a day after, usually at 7:00 for them, if that's okay with you.
So be it. Our reorganization is January 6, 2014, at 4:00 PM, and auditors, January 7, 2014, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
And the last thing I have is just attended the DART meeting last week. Ridership is up, especially during the week. They're up to about 1,200 to 1,300 passengers per month. They will certainly benefit from the state transportation funding that they're getting $250,000. Really appreciate the legislators helping them out. There is special service, the bus service that they held last Friday on the 29th, tomorrow for events in the borough as well as on the 13th. Some of the ridership on Fridays in the cultural loop haven't been as successful, but the committee is continuing to look at ways of improving ridership and seeking additional advertising and marketing ideas. And that's it.
I think it's extraordinary that our representative Quinn and Senator McElhenney was able to bring, what, $200,000?
$50,000.
$50,000 for the transportation bill and $221,000 for the Century Trail, which comes from the Act 13 money. So that just happened in the last few weeks. And I think we're sending thank yous to the senator and to Representative Quinn for really working hard and championing Central Bucks in this area for those funds, because they're going elsewhere in the Commonwealth, and it's nice to see that they're coming here as well. So thank you to the senator and to Representative Quinn. Under supervisor, do we have to supervise it yet?
You are.
Thank you. Can you, do you want to mention the letter from Paine?
Yes.
Yeah.
At your last meeting, Mrs. Lyons brought up that she had heard it from a resident of the Paines, concerns regarding the parkway traffic and to communicate with PennDOT, which we have done. Today, we received, and it's on your table, a letter from the Paines reiterating their concerns regarding the noise from the traffic, the increased usage for the parkway. Certainly, they think the parkway is a big success and helpful for the area and transportation, but there is some residual noise, and we're trying to address that with PennDOT. So we will share with PennDOT their letter as well.
Thank you. All right. Under supervisors, I'd like to have the board entertain the individuals that, for boards and commissions that we interviewed tonight. I would like to move that Kevin Jamison be positioned onto the Central Bucks Regional Aging Task Force. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Paul Donella to our Park and Rec Department, board.
I'll second that.
Is there a second? Oh, I am the second. All in favor? I mean, I'm the first. You're the second. Duh. Okay. Rachel Ford to Kids Castle.
I'll make second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And Kevin Green to District 3 Traffic Advisory Committee.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Emily Remmott, the Performing Arts Council Liaison, to the Park and Rec Board.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Ed Harvey to the Planning Commission.
And I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The other thing that I have, and I'll defer to my other supervisors. Corporal, what's his last name?
Vektor.
Vektor has resigned from the police department, effective January 7, 2014. He's gonna, he benefits for drop, which I think goes in effect in November. He will create two down now in the police department, so Chief has asked that he tender conditional offer of employment to some of the, at least one officer that he has in the pipeline. And I think that's necessary to do at this time. That person would, after background checks and the necessary tests, would be online early January. And then, the second officer that, or the first officer, we didn't expect the corporal to resign, but the one officer that we were intending to replace would be put off to mid-year January, mid-year 2014. So what we're looking for now is, I guess...
To confirm acknowledgement of the retirement of Corporal Vektor, and also authorize the chief to replace him with, or one of the two officers in due course.
We don't need to, we're gonna give the authority to the chief to do that, and when he brings somebody on...
Then you hire somebody. You're just sort of giving them authorization to do so.
And...
The other question, there's been some money available for new officers. I knew Lower Makefield got some money.
We didn't get it.
You didn't get any?
No.
Okay.
But thanks for asking.
Well, I just want to make sure no stone was unturned.
He applied. We applied for it. We didn't qualify for some reason. Okay, so let the chief know that he has the go-ahead to start that process, hire the new guy, and then...
Start the process for the mid-year.
Start with the other guy. Yeah.
Or the other woman.
Or the other woman. Guy.
Guy, generically.
I'm guy. I'm from northeast Philly. Guys are boys and girls. Okay. Here we go. Next item on, oh, sorry, supervisors. Ryan, you have anything?
Just want to say thank you to everybody that came out tonight for the boards. You know, it was great to just see a lot of great people that want to give back and serve on these committees. So thank you to all of them, and welcome.
Yeah, good, good, good. Rick?
Well, with the holidays, it was short. We didn't have too many meetings, but the Planning Commission did meet, and I just want to let the board know, because we'll probably see the applicant at the next meeting. It's for the 98 Shady Retreat Road, which is next to the cement plant on Shady Retreat, the 711. And it's going very smoothly. The issue right now, we're talking about the bike and hike trail, because Delval College comes right out there at the Duck Deli. We've got the 711 in the borough, and right across the railroad tracks is us. And so they're gonna meet with the Bike and Hike Committee before our next board meeting, and then everything goes smoothly there, and we can get all the entities worked out. Really make some inroads, because that's been a piece that we've been trying to get to connect the dots between the borough, the college, and the township, so...
It's two municipalities and the Delval College.
Yeah, and all kind of meet at that point there. And so we got a lot of opportunities, and the applicant seems very amenable to work with us on that, so this could be a nice piece of the puzzle. So we'll be seeing that hopefully at the next meeting, and that's all I have.
Thanks. Tom?
No, nothing to discuss.
Tom?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
The other, I neglected to ask that the new appointees be sent letters when it's next to me, and also the package for boards and commissions. Thank you. Okay, moving along now. This is my second page two of my agenda. New business, traffic signal application for State Street and Burpee Road.
This is to be able to modify the signal at Burpee and State Street. These are the new forms that PennDOT's requiring the six aluminum ramps to be able to activate that pedestrian crossing, everything there with the bike trail that we're working on bringing up there and connecting into the destination Doylestown Trail. So we need to have the board's authorization to modify that signal.
Is there a motion to approve the traffic signal application?
So moved.
Question, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions about this application?
No.
Sergeant, you have any input in this application?
I do not.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know, earn your piece of time. Curbside Waste Management Evaluation Discussion. This was on our agenda last meeting, and I pass on it, I guess in a, it was tabled, for lack of better discussion. I think it's best that we resolve this question. I know that EAC has been working on this for years. We have a project report that was produced by Department of Environmental Protection. A lot of good money went into this report. We also have models from White Marsh and Shawfonte who have used single trash haulers. The review from, I don't know if you all had the benefit of reviewing all this material, but the EAC looked at the two models and looked at the Project 504 report, and then also surveyed residents in the township. I can't, is the, the survey included 489 residents. Is that households, or is that individuals? So could there be a husband and wife?
That was just like an individual.
An individual. So the result of the survey, 83% were either satisfied or very satisfied with their particular trash hauler. There's concern, the reason why EAC has looked at this is for the environmental reasons, more emissions from the trucks, you know, wear and tear to the roads from the various trash trucks, having some uniformity in recycling, having uniformity in pickup and drop-off. And there were some reason, from my review, there's some reason to have a single trash hauler, but I don't know that under the totality of the benefits that, in my estimation, my humble one-person view, that all those reasons weigh heavily in favor of a single trash hauler based on, you know, the residents' satisfaction rate. And as my colleague said the last meeting, after the meeting, neighbors, neighborhoods who are concerned about three or four different trash trucks coming down their neighborhood can band together and select one on their own, which is almost the same as the township imposing one trash hauler, where you have a neighborhood agreeing to one trash hauler. To me, is a lot more democratic, if you will, than having the township make a selection of a private enterprise for residents. That's the way I'm looking at it. I read everything, and weighing the pros and cons, that's where I'm coming out, but that's just my opinion, so I wanted to throw that out for discussion with the rest of the board. Tom?
Yes, I have a similar thoughts. I've been the liaison for the EAC for, I guess, at least maybe 16 to 18 years, and we've talked about this so many times. It's come before the board at least a half a dozen times over the years, and it's been turned down every time, because people want that ability to go out and pick their own trash hauler. And I have to give an example of myself. I saved 50% of what I was paying, BFI, when I went with waste management. They cut me in half for what cost me, and I negotiated that myself. I don't know if I had one hauler, and that was it, that I would have that ability to do that. And I just think that that is an obligation an individual has to make for himself, to decide, who do I want to pick up my trash? Who's the best? Who does the best job? Who maybe is the least expensive? And, you know, it's like Barbara said, maybe the streets should go together and determine if they don't want two trash trucks going down. We have two on our street who come, one comes on Monday and one comes on Tuesday, and I don't really see that it's a big issue, and I just think that most people that I have talked to want that ability to pick who they want to pick up their trash. And I just feel that, you know, it'd be a little bit difficult for us to come down on the township to say, you have to all have this guy, and that's it, and nobody else can come down the street. So I feel free enterprise is an example here that's in good use, and I think we should keep it there. So thank you.
Sean, do you want to weigh in on this?
I have a comment, yeah. I can remember, and Tom makes, you make a good point, you can owe your own, you know, your cost and all that, but I think that EAC's position was not just cost-driven, as Barbara mentioned, about environmental and everything else. And I, certainly not as long as you, but I had served on the EAC as a resident, that's when I first got involved in the township a few years ago, and I remember talking about it, and that was the big topic then, so obviously, like you said, it's been ongoing. But since Keith is here as the past chairman, I don't know if, can we ask if there's anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, Keith had something to say last time. Keith, please, feel free.
Thank you. My views are my own, they don't represent the EAC, because I'm not on the EAC any longer. But I don't know how the supervisors can decide whether or not to go with a single hauler without ever having them evaluate proposals that say what the single waste haulers might offer. I don't know how the residents can respond to a poll if they don't know what their options are. So people that are satisfied or highly satisfied don't know what the options are, so I don't know how that decision can be made tonight without a proposal being issued.
I think, like Sean said, with, even with the EAC board, it's not just about the cost. So if you're talking about getting costs, I mean, if 83% of the people surveyed are happy with their trash provider, I mean, and the general consensus that I'm getting from constituents is, they don't want it being dictated who their trash hauler is. Whether or not it's gonna cost them 25% less, you know, it's being dictated, this is who's gonna haul your trash. And that was, you know, that was my suggestion last meeting. There are simple ways, you know, and I really appreciate the EAC presentation last meeting, and the environmental impact on the multiple trash haulers. I certainly would not want five or six trash trucks driving down my road. But my neighborhood simply came together and decided, and we did our own cost bid analysis, like you're asking the township to do, but we did that ourselves. And we went out and we put bids out to different trash haulers. We got the best price. We have one trash pickup that comes on Wednesday mornings, and, you know, the neighborhoods can, you know, people in the neighborhoods that have these issues can take the initiative to get in touch with their neighbors and say, hey, let's try this. And I guarantee that people will be enticed to do that, to band, you know, with their street and say, okay, yeah, let's take a hard look at this. But I just, you know, again, the consensus I'm getting from people is they do not want it being forced on them, you know, because you're gonna have, you're gonna have maybe lower costs somewhere, but you're gonna have some people that are getting, you know, are gonna have to pay higher, because they're getting great prices already, because they've already banned together with their community, their neighborhood, or their street. You know, that's, and again, that's my personal opinion, that's kind of the feedback that I've been getting from people. And I've just seen what's worked for my neighborhood, my street personally, and it's been that.
Rick, do you have any to add, or?
I just, just two comments. One, I think this, I think there were a lot of positives. The survey was a good, a good thing. We learned a lot from it. One of the complaints I get when I'm out there is you never ask us, you never listen. We asked them, we got the responses. 83% of them said they're satisfied, so now I'm listening to that. 83% are satisfied, so that was my first step. And then, when the consultants came in and we went through it, yeah, there were a lot of things that we can improve, but we can improve most of those ourselves without going to a single hauler. And we discussed some of the, some of the things that we can do to make improvements on our own with, without being onerous on the residents by dictating to them a single hauler. So I think we did get a lot of good things out of this. I understand, I hear where everybody's going, but we got a lot of good things out of this, and I would encourage the EAC to, let's start attacking some of the deficiencies and the shortfalls, and we can work on them and make improvements.
Someone who's been around for a couple of years will remember the two prior occasions when this issue came forward, and I can remember this room being packed from side to side with people that were vehemently opposed, because the idea of one hauler sounds attractive, but you have no control over who bids on the contract. And if you review some of the, some of the news reports from other municipalities that do have a single hauler, you can see that sometimes the service declines, you have issues about, there's no reason to be courteous to the customer, because you have a three-year contract. But it's not my job to make, to sort of tell you what to do. The other thing that makes sense is what Ryan says, perhaps you need to spend some time in a newsletter, letting people know that you can do things like this to limit the traffic, to improve service, and maybe save yourself some money, and people will be alerted to that, and maybe you'll have, or even some of the larger communities, you know...
What do neighborhoods do, condo associations? I mean, they all have one, you know, people aren't driving through Ballywick with...
Right, or Tewksbury.
Yeah, they have one trash hauler. So because the, you know, they've come together as a condo association and, you know, bid on that.
Things you can do, and I think that can help, but, you know, I'm just, listen, your choice is not mine, but I can remember somebody came up here and dropped a big bag of trash on Jeff Williams's diocese here, and says, nobody else is taking my trash but who I want to take the trash. So it's, it's a, and the same thing happened in Lower Makefield, same thing happened in Plumstead, where there was a hue and cry about this, and it really brought people out that were exercised.
Dick and I were talking earlier today. Although the EAC brought this issue up, there are some issues in our current ordinance. Steph knows I gave her a memo with changes we should probably make to the trash ordinance. Jeff knows, because I talked to him about it, too. So there's definitely like a comprehensive review we could do of the ordinance, and hopefully address some of the green issues that the EAC was concerned about, possibly through like an incentive for a greener hauler, like if they use a CNG truck. There's a lot of things we could try to do creatively through the ordinance. So I don't know if you have any experience with that, Jeff, but...
We've worked on, yes. It's hard, it's hard to deal with the issues about the biofuels in the trucks, because you really don't have the ability to regulate a lot of those issues.
And that's the trouble, too, with trash in general now. The state has the superseding authority or whatever, but hopefully, we can try, like you said, through education to make it happen.
I saw on your memo that 60, I think 67%, 63%, no, 97% residents reported they do recycle. 97%.
Of the 400 that answered.
Of the 400. Well, I think it's probably...
I did want to point out, too, we've put that survey out probably six times, so we really tried to get resident feedback. We use Survey Monkey, but for me, I was really excited that we got that many responses, but it did take a lot of work.
Okay. Well, I'm, please.
Ken Snyder, 50, Foxcroft Drive. I would just encourage us not to be fooled with the statistics, because as an example, and when we talk about number of people who recycle, we're a family of two, and we have more recyclable items in our bins than families of four or six. So it's not, do I recycle? It is, what do I recycle? And how much do I recycle? And what will our trash haulers recycle? So it's bigger than just a survey and a number, so we really need to understand the data behind it.
I agree, and I think we can cover a lot of that with the review of our ordinance, and also with the education in the newsletter and online.
You remember when recycling started? There were mandatory stuff going around, and people actually did more then than they do now, I think, because there was the, it was a, it was a common issue to talk about, it was something on the plate of everybody, and it was, but I think that whole enthusiasm to do so has diminished.
Yeah, and I think we can do a resurgence in that sort of thing. I think that's probably a way we can spend our time.
Spend some energy reeducating and that kind of thing.
Good, thank you. All right, I'm gonna call the question on whether we, let's, let's take a vote on this, put this baby to bed. We'll entertain a motion on the single trash hauler. Does anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, for the time being, to stick with the way we have it, not go with this single trash hauler.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second that one.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Looks like a five and... Thank you. Okay. Zoning Hearing Board application for 73 Old Dublin Pike.
Yes. We have an application for variance. I would recommend we leave the matter to the zoning hearing board, although I do recommend that we send a letter to the zoning hearing board advising them that the color scheme and size, more so the color scheme needs to be more in keeping with the area and everything.
I'm confused by this application.
This is the old...
I know where it is. Hong Kong Jacks, but I'm confused. They're asking for two signs. Is that what they're asking for?
Yes, they're asking for this sign, mose on front and side.
Okay.
And...
My confusion is...
Mm-hmm. And at the present time, there is no sign on the side. There's only a sign in the front. Also, from the looks of it, they're increasing it, the size quite a bit, and then the color is not gonna blend with the rest of the...
The color of the sign?
Sign, the background of the sign. That's the background.
The sign is, I think they're changing it.
Yeah, that's fine, but the, you see the...
The mustardy yellow.
The mustardy yellow versus the...
I guess I'm just, this is probably just a stupid question, but why, why isn't this guided by the supermarket or the chain here?
I mean, the looks of the sign and the...
That's what they're doing. They're bringing their look and everything in there.
Isn't shopping...
The shopping, oh, the shopping center.
Don't they have rules?
There's no others on this side of them.
They have rules, but obviously, the operator, the owner of the center has decided they need to fill a spot, so they don't believe that that has any...
Significant impact.
Negative impact on the balance of the center.
I see.
So I believe our zoning hearing board can handle, you know, can address the variance issues, but I do think, from an aesthetic standpoint, we should probably communicate with them, if the board agrees, that perhaps they consider the proportion of the sign and the color scheme.
Want to see it?
I think we should leave this to the zoning hearing.
Yeah, the only question is whether or not the concerns of the board related to the color scheme should be communicated, or leave it, leave, leave the determination of good taste to the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, exactly. I really, you know, they are, all those logos in that shopping center look different to me anyway, and they all have a different color background.
They all start off, I don't know how it is, but they all start off usually all monochrome, all the same color, all blue and white, like a commercial square was first built. And then, as vendors change, it seems like that's when they, right's the way it goes.
Yeah, that's the way it goes.
My only question is, if you start now, they have, I'm all for them having good visibility, if they start with two signs, does that open the door for every one of those spaces and they have two signs?
Well, the next person that comes in can say, well, you gave them a variance, so it creates an issue. You're probably, you know, frankly, I think you're better off trying to work with one sign and not worry about the color, because it's not Williamsburg, and if you look at the, if you look at the adjoining shopping center, Doylestown Shopping Center, it's a whole lot nicer than the way that is currently, so...
Yeah.
I think the bigger oomph is that two signs seems to me to be the deviation from the norm as opposed to the color.
Yeah, I would, I agree with, I would, I agree with the solicitor.
I think if you're gonna send a letter, you tell me you're not satisfied or happy with two signs, but...
Because of the opportunity for others to come in with their signs and...
We can do that.
Okay.
That seems to be the consensus. I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding.
Yes. Okay. We'll send a letter. Okay, DTMA, we received, what, their 2014 budget? DTMA, we received, what, their 2014 budget. They're solvent. Doing well?
Yes, they are.
We acknowledge receipt.
We acknowledge receipt because under the agreement with the authority, that's all, you just get a copy and acknowledge receipt.
And an attaboy. Thank you very much. Bills list for 2000, is that...
G.
Sorry. DTMA inter municipal agreement, addendum number five. Is there a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve? Thank you. Second?
I'll make a second.
Any questions? Does anybody wanna...
Just for the, justification of the public, there's authorities that are in the public water business move water back and forth between communities as a need arises. And this just establishes a cost for what they call wheeling. And it's to reflect the operational administrative expenses to maintain the wheeling relationship and the costs.